Councilmember Jim Looney, can you attest that we have a foreperson?
Yes, sir, we do.
Before being present, I now declare this meeting over. We're going to do something different. The Jasper Ministerial Association, the president of that, I believe, is Ralph Barker. And so we have our city manager has on our behalf talked to the Ministerial Association about occasionally coming in here when we have our meetings and doing an implication for us, and I think that there's everything good about that and nothing bad. So at this point, I would ask Ralph Barker, if you would, please to come forward and do an indication for us.
Thank you so much. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you today. You know, you're the maker of heaven and earth and the giver of every good and perfect gift. We thank you for the people here today, and we thank you for the leadership that we have in this county, that we're able to approach and to talk to our leaders and to interact with them. I pray that you bless this meeting and you help everyone minister to each other and to get the work done that needs to be done. And we thank you for all these things in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk Rethan, will you put this in our place?
Yes, sir. United States of America, in a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we testify, as a whole.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, if you look at your agenda, we have a revision to the agenda, item eight, under new business approval of alcohol license for Rocko's Pub Incorporated. I understand you're going to change in ownership of that particular establishment.
Yes.
Would like to have that in place for them to continue with that change?
I also have another revision to the agenda. Due to technical difficulties, we were unable to get April 4th meeting minutes to you, so you'll not be voting on those tonight as it states on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
And I believe there is an additional revision on the street closure time for second Saturdays. Councilmember Raffield?
Yes, so there is a time difference. Once we get to that item, I can certainly lay the hours out. There will be a change in the request.
Okay, so we need to vote on this. So Kirk, if you will, just go ahead and tell us that since we're going to be voting on the revised agenda approval.
It's on there, though. His is on the agenda, just doesn't have the time.
Correct. The agenda item is present.
Yes.
The actual change in time would be from two to 10. Instead of two to 10, it'd be 12 to 10.
12 to 10. Okay, so counsel, I entertain a motion to adopt the revised agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Under old business, consideration approval of a variance to the zoning ordinance 22-02-04 for 3622 Camp Road, otherwise known as the Old Bar and Barn.
Excuse me, sir. Did you want to adopt the minutes from March the 28th?
Oh, well, I just absolutely skipped those to go to lower.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from March the 28th, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries unanimously. And now we'll go back to the variance, consideration approval of variance of the zoning ordinance 2204, excuse me, 02-04 for 3622 Camp Road, Old Bar. Just a walk.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The variance is for the U-Haul company that has purchased the Old Bar and Barn, and it has been presented to planning and zoning and approved, and it was all before public hearing last week. And so tonight staff is asking for counsel to make approval of reducing the parking spaces from down to 20 spaces since this is no longer a retail. And I have presented to council with a letter stating that if this building is ever sold or changes hands or usage, that it will be pulled back to the present ruin, and the parking will be talked about and voted on at that time.
Do we include in there for it to be put on the deed as we requested last?
Yes, and they said that they would do whatever we asked them to, put it on the deed, or certify this letter and have it attached to the deed, or whatever the council preferred.
So what they, this will be recorded on?
Yes, and attached to the deed, yes.
Counsel, any further questions? You entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
As presented. And a second, please. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, ma'am? Sorry. So just clarifying, this is only on the variance on the parking, correct?
Yes, it is.
And the additional storage buildings will be coming back before planning and zoning and back before the exit?
Yes. I spoke with Wes to the state, and we went over the details, and he understands.
Okay. Sorry, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries unanimously. Under new business, item number one, consideration approval of resolution 22-04, real development grant. We'll ask our assistant city manager, Kim Goldinger, to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Staff has been made aware of a recently funded Department of Community Affairs grant program that is designed specifically for rural downtown revitalization projects. This is a one-time funded opportunity. They're looking for transformative projects that are either shovel-ready or as close to being shovel-ready as possible. We believe that the downtown streetscape and the pedestrian improvements project that was proposed for last year's DOT TAP grant program fits the bill for that, and particularly when you add our downtown restrooms into that project as well, that becomes about as transformative as you can get. So the grant application is due on June the 3rd. We've got the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission working with us on the grant application. There is a 10% match to this program. We have $360,000 that was previously allocated from 2020's lost funding to provide the matching portion of that TAP grant, and I would ask that we reallocate that dollar amount so that we could hold the 10% matching for this grant program there. We've also got resolution 2022-03 for approval that we will need to include in with our grant application package. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions of Kim, counsel? Can we try a little time?
Keep on trying.
Keep on trying.
No, it doesn't hurt.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve resolution 2022-03, and also the application for the rural downtown redevelopment grant program. Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution and application. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, consideration approval resolution 2022-04, the Pickens County broadband amendment to the joint comprehensive plan. We'll ask our city manager, Sonya James, to bring that to us.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. You have before you the request for the Department of Community Affairs reviewed the broadband plan for the area, and they made an amendment to it. And that amendment is going to be added into the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan. Since we are a part of the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan, all localities that are a part of that must agree to the amendment that is being made. You have a copy of it, and I'm just requesting tonight that you approve that amendment so that it can go in and be updated into the comp plan.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 2022-04 for the Pickens County broadband amendment to the joint comprehensive.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 2022-04. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, resolution 2022-05, extension to a temporary moratorium, and we're going to ask our city attorney, David Siphon, and our city manager, Sonya James, to bring that to us.
Yes, sir. I am actually going to defer to the city attorney in discussion of this extension to moratorium.
Well, as the council recall, you instituted the temporary moratorium, and temporary moratorium is going to wraps on June 1st, and as you know, the development committee has been meeting with a planning professional to look at doing zoning text amendments, and my understanding is they're very close if they haven't already presented those proposed amendments to the council, but we need to give you all a little bit more time so that you could study them, think about them, and have some time. And with the June meeting, I think is going to be after the June 1st date, and to give you a little bit more time, this temporary extension would extend the moratorium until and including July 15th. And that way, if you're ready at the June meeting to adopt the amendments to the zoning ordinance, you could adopt it at the June meeting and then lift the moratorium on that date. If you need more time to think about it and decide what you want to do, then this extension goes all the way to July 15th, which would cover the council meeting that's moved on July 4th to July 11th. So it would give you more time to consider, do we like these changes, do we need to modify them a little bit? But in any event, we need to extend that moratorium because it will wraps before y'all could take action on it, and so we need a motion to approve the extension to the temporary moratorium.
You entertain a motion to approve the temporary extension to July 15th?
Second.
Second, please.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion by counsel?
Mr. Siphon, I'd like to add to your discussion that the committee has completed its work. We are in the process of either presenting that to counsel or the, our initial plan was to present it to you first, and once you review that prior to the entire council, is that satisfactory?
Oh, that's fair.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Item four is consideration approval of alcohol ordinance 2022-05, adding distilleries and packaged sales. And once again, Mr. Siphon, if you will, we would ask you to bring this to us.
All right. The council will remember that in 2021, we amended our alcohol ordinance to provide for distilleries in the city. It basically set up two licensing schemes that one, you could just have a distillery license, and you would sell to a wholesaler, or back in 2021, the ordinance was written so that a distillery could have a cocktail room and sell by the package and sell by the drink. While we were amending our ordinance to do that, in 2021, the General Assembly amended the statutes on distilleries and basically provided that if you were licensed as a distillery, then you can do package sales and sales by the drink without having a separate license. So we needed to do this amendment to make our ordinance consistent with the state statutory law, and that's what this ordinance does. Since a distillery can have sales by the package and sales by the drink, I basically took the cocktail room provisions that you approved back in 2021 and just made them applicable to all distilleries. The question, or a matter that y'all need to decide tonight, is back in 2021, for just a distillery, we set a license fee of $3,000, but for a distillery with a cocktail room, we set a license fee of $4,000. So when I went back to amend the ordinance, of course, we're taking out the distillery with cocktail room because now under the state statutory law, you don't have to have a cocktail room if you're a licensed distillery to do sales by the drink and sales by the package. So the question is, do you want to leave that distillery license fee at $3,000, or do you want to raise it to the license fee with the cocktail room that 2021 you set at $4,000? And the proposed ordinance as written on page six has the $4,000 license fee. If y'all decide you wanted to stick with $3,000 license fee, then we'll just have to make that minor change to change what the fee amount is. But we need a motion to approve this alcohol ordinance amendment on distilleries, and as a part of that motion, you need to decide what the license fee that you want to impose is going to be going forward.
Counsel, you entertain a motion to approve, subject to discussion?
Make a motion that we approve the alcohol ordinance 2022-05 with us leaving the fee as 4,000 that we discussed with the room.
Okay, and... For the discussion for a second on that motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Item five is consideration and approval to pay off the loan for the police department located at 55 GT Level Street. Ms. Lindsay, would you please talk to us about this?
Yes, I'd love to, Mayor, council. So in order to reduce the city's debt, staff is requesting to pay off, our police department is now located at 55 GT Level Street. We currently owe approximately $105,000, and if we did pay it off, we'll save plus the $7,800 in interest, and we would use funds from our Avalorum account to pay off this loan.
What this does is this helps increase the city's debt capacity for future endeavors and getting debt. Obviously, the lower amount of debt that we owe, the ability to get loans is in the future, so we are strategically positioning ourselves for those things.
If approved, we would probably need to work with Mr. Siphon on, kind of like we did with the DDA with the Perro property.
Okay. Counsel, you entertain a motion to approve the payoff of this loan for that located at 55 GT Level Street?
I think anytime we can do anything we have, and on, is always to our advantage. So I'd like to make the motion that we pay off 55 GT Level Street and start away and , you know, probably as debt-free as we can.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion by counsel?
Sonya, at some point in time, I would love to have a discussion amongst counsel about a debt strategy. I think over the years...
Absolutely.
We've talked about it amongst ourselves, but not really developed exactly what it means to go in debt and what for, and so forth and so on, so.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item six is consideration and approval of purchasing turnout gear. This will be brought to us by our new chief, John Scherer. Welcome, chief.
I just asked if he'd stand for a minute, she said no.
We throw you in early and let you go and stuff.
That's just right. In your packet, you should have had a quote for one single set of turnout gear, and that is to equip our personnel for structural firefighting here from head to toe. Also, we have a brief description of why we're doing that, and basically what I have right now is I have one firefighter who has damaged gear to heat. I have three coming in, including myself, that don't have fitted turnout gear for them. We might as well find something out of this closet that might fit them, but it's expired if we do, so that won't work. And then I have four that are sets that are expiring this year, so that puts me at a total of eight sets that we need to replace. And the reason I'm saying they need to be replaced are expiring is because NFPA 1851 states that the maximum allowable time that we can use structural turnout gear is 10 years, and those four sets are meeting that 10-year expiration.
Any questions? Any elaborate questions?
Or you think you might need a couple of extra spares on the side, just in case you have?
Well, I hate to do that because this stuff is measured, and that's included in the quote. They'll come and measure it specifically for them, so I hate to order something, and then we bring somebody in and it won't fit. A lot of times what I like to do is I'll put this newer stuff on our full timers, and if they're wearing, if it's still in date and fits, a part timer, we'll put that filter down with part timers, just depending if it's part timers, it's been a long time and works a lot, we go ahead and put them in a set that fits and measured and everything for it.
Well, there's other pieces of equipment, say like maybe the coat or that part that wears out or gets damaged more. Wouldn't it be nice to have a spare too, some of the?
It would be nice. At fact, the new standards, or a lot of departments are going to having two sets, and that's a cancer prevention issue because you get a lot of carcinogens and things on you when you go to structural fires, all the tighter carpets and things like that burning in modern construction and newer synthetic materials, and it gets allergies in your skin, it's everywhere. In fact, the hoods I've quoted are particulate filter hoods, and they'll filter out those carcinogens to help protect our people of war, but that is the standard unit two sets. So when you come out of that environment, that fire, we have to pull that gear off of them, and we put the fresh set of gear on them, that way they don't miss the beat as far as the refrigeration response. And then we wash the gear that came out of the fire in the extractors that we have to clean it and dry it and get it ready again.
Well, that might be something we need to look for next year.
It is something, and I would like to work on this to where it's a regular budgeted item. I spoke to Sonya about that, maybe a capital project as far as having a rotation where we purchase it. That way I'm not coming up here before you and asking for $30,000, you know, randomly at different times. That way we can plan for it, it's a budgeted item, and it's not a surprise, and we're ready for it. But to get us where we need to be as far as turnout gear goes right now with the people we have, this is what I would need to purchase.
Is that your five-year plan?
It would be. It is, now, if you approve it now, I would have to put a five-year plan on the table.
Right. Just a second, sir.
That's right, just a second, sir.
Counsel, you have any further questions of our chief chair?
The order in eight sets, we have a grant request in?
Yes, sir.
For part of this, if it's approved?
So what we've requested, and that's through the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, which we have not heard anything back on, that's actually replacing all the SCBAs.
That's the breathing apparatus, the tanks.
Okay, so this would not be, it would not be used to cover this cost?
No, sir.
That's a completely different item, but it's just part of the ensemble, but it's not the actual clothing that wears the breathing apparatus.
And purchasing wise, we're all right.
We would be purchasing this from our spots, 2020 spots.
Kim, did we agree to purchase the breathers even if we did not get the grant? Can you remind me, do you recall?
We've not had that discussion yet.
Okay, right.
Any further discussion, counsel? Questions? You entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Eight turnout gears.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
So you got your first, and now listen to the next.
That's right. Maybe Liz was telling me that.
Item number seven, street closure request for second Saturdays. Kirk, I think you've got this.
Yes, sir. So, Mayor, council, the Downtown Development Authority is moving right along with the second Saturdays for downtown Jasper. And you'll see presented in your packet under item number seven, the street closure request for second Saturdays. Working with the main point of contact for this, there is a request for the street to be closed. It is different than other street closures in the fact that it is only the center portion of Main that will be closed. The city previously acquired for purchasing silver barricades for crowd control and street closures, those barricades would be used along the sides of Court and Depot Street across Main, so traffic would still be able to flow in other areas other than that center section. The time request to be closed is from noon until 10:00 PM on the dates in your packet. The idea behind this is as the event grows and becomes more popular, this allows for the growth in the stage, the band setup, and any vendors that may be present in the future. Do you have any questions? The chairman is actually here with me, Mr. Jack does. You'll see that there's an image in your packet, it's a rough image, two red lines that I prepared for you, that is where the silver barricades would go, and proper signage would be in place announcing a detour to attempt to keep commercial traffic off of
Counsel, any further questions?
Eight sets from noon?
Yes.
So you'll still have some people parking?
So what that allows, correct, the new enclosure allows us, you'll see that there are four spots, parking spots in front of the wine bar and the taco shop affected, and then the handicap parking in front of the courthouse. The handicap parking in front of the courthouse likely will be called off earlier that day by city crews, so we will not have anyone parking there. I imagine we can do the same for the four to five parking spots on the other side. I don't anticipate a huge impact on parking at all.
Hope we have a good turnout.
Absolutely.
Counsel, any further questions on this? Now, I entertain a motion to approve the street closures for second Saturday?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Or you guys please say aye. Opposed, same, and Jack, yours is? Opposed, same, and Jack, you're just, thank you, you're welcome. Item eight is, uh, approval of an alcohol license for Rocko's Club, and, uh, real answer, Lindsey Weed should bring this to me, because I was thinking to us, you, that Rocko's Club is complete, another license.
Um, Mayor, as you mentioned earlier, um, Rocko's Club's changing owners, so we've had the new owners coming to make application, um, for a re-told consumption license, which we are wanting to still spirits. The location's at 47 Mountainside Village Parkway. They did complete the background check, and there were no disqualifying factors, and we were just asking if we could go ahead and issue their alcohol license.
So, we're going to reissue new alcohol license to them for that location, is that correct?
Yes, for the new owners.
For the new owners, again.
Their names are in your packet, I don't want to betray them.
Yeah.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Lindsey at this point?
I have to go through the process as far as, uh, background checks, all that stuff.
The background check came back, there was no disqualification.
You're already done that, you're ahead of us. Oh, good job.
I make motion that we approve the alcohol license for the new owners of Rocko's Club. I'm not going to put you there, I know.
You have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, new alcohol license for what looks like to be Robin and Michael Catalano, and I will not stick to that when I see it through you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, the breadth of time, we're down to committee review. Not that I'm excited or leaving anytime soon.
One more thing, Mayor.
Oh, that's too right.
Sorry, sorry.
We'll start with the Development Committee, uh, of what, uh, we, uh, we'll start with Development Committee. And Dr. Proctor, if you would present this.
Yes, sir, as I mentioned, uh, we've, uh, completed our, uh, review process of consultants, and, uh, committee has signed off on that information. Um, we do want to run that by counsel, just for, uh, I'm sure that we haven't done anything that violates the law, and then they could bring that information, um, to you at the appropriate time, and again, we've already, um, agreed to these, to continue the extension at this time. Despite the moratorium, I think the department's quite busy and a lot of, uh, kicking the tires and a lot of excitement about projects that we look forward to, like in our city better.
Thank you, sir. Street and Parks Committee?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes?
To tag along on the development, I'm going to report on the Downtown Development Authority, momentarily, and follow their development. DDA did vote, uh, on an agreement with, uh, vendor, professional vendor for downtown in reference to the planners and the freight models, the maintenance thereof, the, the installation. Chairman has the agreement, should be executed shortly, we'll move forward with that, should begin within a 30-day timeframe, so you'll see downtown's first up even more, and, uh, I want to thank you all for believing and investing in Second Saturday. Our downtown area is thriving.
First, we're all excited about Second Saturday, and I know that DDA is trying to this, and I just am looking forward, I'm going to get back in time for Second Saturday, but thank you all for that so much. Thank you, sir. Would you like to do, um, Street and Parks?
No, I'm good, I'll leave that to Streets and Parks.
It's a good idea.
Does not have ports.
I think it still has, but if you could...
Can you use a quick, uh, panel board with me?
Sure. Uh, so, we're tentatively scheduled to have, uh, kind of a stakeholders' meeting with the appropriate groups that would be using the park. That will be made the 18th at 6:00 here. I'm still waiting for the plan, though, from Walt Ready and Trails Be Ready, so we should have that anytime now. I think we will want to schedule a Parks Committee meeting to take a quick look at it and make sure that it's hit all the, the angles that we want it to before we take it to the stakeholders' meeting, but we should be ready to go, um, fairly soon, so.
Thank you for all you all.
Keep with us after, so we'll make a... Yes.
One statement here, and that is that we have discussed about, about the Perro Park, I think that on the agenda each month, and, uh, and I'll ask you to give a report on that.
Did you need a report on that?
Uh, gosh.
I don't know that we've had any of these.
We, uh, I think counsel has gotten, uh, the, uh, responses from the committee. I hope everybody has those electronically. What I would suggest is we make that a item to be discussed at our retreat, uh, on the 15th, and, uh, I think then we can come up with ideas to, to move on the project.
21st.
21st, that's what I said.
Where I can do a brief update on the background, if you'd like to hear another one.
Sure.
We have, uh, fast-tracked that with the new committee, and, um, we've been through floor plan design and, and, uh, elevations, and they're in the process of securing, uh, bids, and hopefully be able to present that to counsel very quickly.
So, floor plans and elevations, have you...
Let me correct that, we have not, we have not, we're not securing bids, the, the designer is working with bids on the, uh...
Floor plan and elevation.
Right. It was sent to us.
I was going to get that, that's part of the...
I saw all those eyebrows over there going, "Oh."
So, uh, Ian, would you give us an administrative committee report?
I don't have any, but you know, we, we have had a meeting, we've got...
Since, uh, the last council meeting, we have one...
We only have one plan here.
Certainly.
We will. Water, wastewater, John, and Dr. Proctor.
Wow, we've, uh, there's been a lot of wheels turning, um, working on some, uh, hopeful developments as it relates to our, not only our treatment plant, but also our water, and all I can say is that, um, uh, the folks at the Capitol are working well with us, and we are, uh, communicating quite friendly about what the possibilities are, and hopefully have some, uh, stuff come out pretty quick.
Thank you, sir.
Did you want to bring up the AMIs?
Oh, I'm sorry, we, uh, on Thursday night, we approved the, uh, the AMI metering, uh, and, um, that was a big move for those of you who didn't attend the meeting on Thursday, it was just some broad strokes that were, uh, accomplished, and I'm very excited, very excited to meet you all.
And we also approved our master plan.
Yes, sir, we've engaged, uh...
Another one was broad strokes, so.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
It's glad to see things going instead of just talking.
Uh, Police and Fire Committee, Mr. Veroni, Mr. Rafferty?
The, uh, chiefs have now had about a month to come up with ideas, and, uh, they have requested a meeting on Wednesday, uh, at 5:30, so we will be meeting with them, and, uh, I'm sure I have something to report out of that.
Wednesday at 5:30? Chief, I'm sorry, but, um, I will not make that meeting.
In addition to that, Mayor and counsel, um, the police department is in receipt of one new vehicle, uh, this time more on the way in the coming weeks, um, so for the police department, that's exciting, and they also have some things changing internally that they're looking at. On the fire side, the addition continues to move forward, we're excited about that. Um, I want to thank both the chiefs, both the departments. Um, April 19th, one of the worst days of my life, uh, through the loss of my mother, both your departments came, and, uh, compassionate and professional, so thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Financial report, Lindsey, this was a lot of...
We're not going to go by this, my darling. Thank you. We're actually not going to read it.
It's like reading the minutes, you gotta read the financial report.
We can read.
Y'all can read. It's all provided for, you know, and, and so, a couple additional things, y'all can look over and see if those things are interested in. Um, if y'all have any questions, you know how to reach out to me, and I'll...
Any questions?
If you have anything in your passion, you can.
Counsel, any questions, Lindsey? Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor.
Lots of thanks.
Well, I'm worried, you're both going to report.
Mayor and counsel, at the, uh, month of April, we issued 49 building permits, uh, 44 of them were new residential, five renovations, and five sign permits, uh, for $47,180. Uh, we did 117 on-site building inspections, 18 soil erosion inspections, and had 14 animal calls, and we've issued nine new business licenses for the month.
Very good, thank you, sir. Any questions, Lindsey? Fire report, Chief John Scherer, if you would, please.
Well, we'd like to see a little closer than our old eyes, because... I would give it something a hard time to tell us, we had to tell a pair of its hands to laugh. Um, you should have in your packet our report that I forwarded, uh, we had 173 calls for service total. Um, it is notable that a couple days, we ran 12 to 14 calls in one day, kept it pretty busy, um, that's Fridays, Mondays, right around the weekend time. Fire marshal's report, got 18 inspections, five plant reviews, and two pre-construction meetings, that puts him at 25 contacts. Um, we only had one structure fire, unfortunately, that was just an outbuilding, uh, a house. Two vehicle fires, 11 motor vehicle accidents, um, we did have a fatality this month, so that's never good. Um, we are seeing more accidents, a long 5:15, of course, as traffic picks up, holiday season's coming up, we can expect more of that, um, and 113 emergency medical calls, so that rounds us out to 173 total. Of course, I don't know if y'all see down there where it says good intent calls and service calls, uh, that's stuff like canceled and routed and things like that. We were called, thought they needed us, but they ended up not, or either we showed up and investigated, but there was no actual hazardous condition, so, just want to clarify what those were.
Any questions, Mayor Collins, anything? Counsel?
Burn, burn ban started May 1st.
Burn ban starts May 1st, that's right, and, uh, I did talk to the architects about the addition, and he assured me they should have the plants finalized mid-May, is what he told me. Uh, that was about a week and a half ago, I think, when I spoke to them, so, that should be moving along, and as soon as we get to 9:10, we can move forward.
Thank you, chief.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, chief.
And certainly, not least, uh, they should do a police report, uh, Chief, you know, the office.
He's so excited, he's...
My little limp, girl. So, y'all have in front of y'all how many things we did over the week or early month? 981 calls total, it's a lot. But what I want to bring to your attention real quick is, for the March and April, a total of 39 just drug arrests from Bobby Tane on traffic stops. So, 31 of those are felony, and eight of those are Mr. Mayor.
Eight of what?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, okay.
So, you step back in the day with just pills and methamphetamine and marijuana. So, out of these 39 calls, heroin, MDMA, meth, fentanyl, crack cocaine, marijuana, that's everything that's traveling up that little corridor, up to Murphy, wherever, and going back to Atlanta. But in the two months, we have some goers, we have been able to roughly see $16,500 of drug money, and one vehicle. Now, 1,200 of that, we have got a fourth room that is ours, uh, but the rest were sitting in court waiting, so, along with the progress, we're making something out of it, taking the money and your oats, so. But I want to pass that on to you, because it is picking up, just like the chief said there, with more cars, more vehicles, and have a like to do, and I like to wash their money, um, and bring it back, so that we're trying to get it away from them. Any questions?
Good job.
Good job, man. Thank you, sir. Can I have one? One more. Well, what, uh, counsel, I've been thinking about, excuse me, Jim?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.